Okay.
Oh, yeah.
It's 6:30, everybody. Chief Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. It's 6:30. I'd like to call the meeting to order tonight, Tuesday, March 50th at 6:30 PM. The first order of business is public comments. I see none. Next, is Richard planning to attend? Richard? We have the emergency management plan. I don't see him. I've looked it over. Jeanette, did you look it over? It's just basically updating contact information. Did anybody on the board have any questions about it? So, any other, any questions about the emergency management plan? So, we need a motion for the chair to sign the emergency management plan and the LE, local emergency management plan, and the NIMs, which is the whatever it means here. Oh, it's, yes. It's a National Incident Management System data.
I make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign the local emergency management plan and National Incident.
National Incident. Hold on, I have to find it again. National Incident Management System.
Management System.
Any discussion? All in favor? Now, we have highway. I see Travis is joining us from Zoom. Travis, we have Can you unmute? Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks. I hear you're not feeling great, so thanks for joining us.
Absolutely.
So, as I said to Jeanette, we're gonna buy some trucks when you're not feeling well, and the prices are gonna make us all sicker.
I feel like we should place, I should be, I think, I think we should order them. That way, we can get them coming. We see them before the year is end, you know?
And we'll lock in these prices?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. So, there's copies of that. Does everybody have? I have one here. This is it. So, Travis, tell us about your 10-wheel dump truck prices and trade-in information.
We didn't have very good luck this year. A lot of people have sold out of their 2022 trucks already. They sold out of a lot of them back in last November. So, like Mac, they gave us a number, but unless somebody drops an order or something, that truck's really not an option. Western Star has some ordered, and International has some ordered. Those are what's available right now. We ordered a Western Star last year. We've been happy with that truck so far. I'd like to get that same thing again.
And they're gonna give us 70,000 trade-in?
Yes, but I'd like to try to sell this one outright. Yeah, I think that's less than last year. I was, I was disappointed with that trade value. And I, I, I wanna try to shoot for 100. Especially, especially with trying to, as hard as it is to get a truck now. I think our truck is not a piece of junk. I think it holds some value, and that is, like I said, this is less than, less than what they offered last year in trade, so I, I just, I wanna try to sell that one outright. It's okay.
So, question, it's not gonna affect us purchasing it. They're not gonna ding us for not trading it in or anything, right?
Nope, nope.
And you can do it off the line?
I've already made it clear to the vendors. If I didn't like, if I didn't like the trade, I was gonna keep the truck. You know, and we'll just buy it outright, because we budgeted more than enough to do so.
Did you have a question, Scott?
No, I'm just proving out.
Okay, so let's just continue on with the, the equipment for the dump truck.
Yeah, I'd like to go with the, with the cheapest route on this one, the Viking equipment. That's, well, that's what's currently on the truck that we're replacing. It would be the same thing again, and it served us well.
Any questions about the equipment? Okay, so somebody want, any, any questions on the public about a dump truck to get it on order? Alright, so we need a motion to purchase the truck, the equipment, and that we will try to sell our, our old truck ourselves, and we're not trading it in at this point.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we purchase the Western Star 10-wheel dump truck for $140,447, and the Viking equipment to outfit the dump truck at $83,000, and that we not trade in the vehicle that it is replacing, and instead allow Travis to sell it.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Okay, now, we're gonna talk about a mid-sized truck to replace the Ford 550. Talk to us about these.
These, these chassis are just a touch larger than the Ford 550. They're this, the 550 is the truck that Bill always used to run. It does all of our little side roads and stuff. Here, I, I ran into the same thing with the little trucks. Some of them wouldn't give me a trade value, because they can't get the truck within nine months. They won't, they'll give us a trade value in nine months when they get of us our chassis. However, International has their little truck, which is fine, and they offered a $25,000 trade. The International truck and the Chevrolet truck are basically the same thing. They went together on building them. They're just different labels on, different emblems. Like the Chevrolet GMC thing. It's, International and Chevrolet made that truck. So, I'd like to go with the International CV515 and, and the Viking equipment on this one as well.
Question. What about the trade-in? Do you wanna do the trade-in, or do you wanna?
I do, I do, I do wanna do the trade-in on this one. I think it's a limited market for the 550 chassis, especially with our plow and wing equipment on it. I think, I think we should just trade this one.
Any questions on this?
What year is the truck, Travis?
This, this, the one we're trading is a 2015.
Um, I have a question.
Yes.
We only budgeted in our capital plan $92,000 for this particular vehicle. And even with the trade-in, we're gonna be somewhat over.
No, we should have budgeted 135 for this.
Hmm. I'm looking, I'm looking at the town report from last year. Are you saying we upgraded it?
Yeah, this was one that we changed.
Okay, hold on.
Yep, no problem. This was one that we changed along with the, along with removing the excavator, remember?
I just need to take a look at it.
Yep, no problem.
And, these are, so what are we gonna, these are for next fiscal year expenditures?
Yes.
They're not happening in the
We're not gonna get them.
They won't, they won't happen till after July. No, nothing, no money. You know, like they said, if, if we don't buy it, the next person will.
Just in case, yes. Okay. Alright. Are there any other questions about the mid-sized truck? Alright, I left a motion.
I make a motion, we purchased the, the International CV515 truck to replace the Ford 550 at a price of $68,650, with the equipment from Viking of $66,650, and accept the trade-in on the International, accept the trade-in value of $25,000.
Yep, from the Ford.
Anything else? All, oh, Joe?
Travis, you, you might wanna ask around at other towns that might be able to use that piece of equipment. They may, you won't to buy it, just the thought, if we could get more than 25,000. If they don't need to trade one, just say.
Right. When I inquired about that truck that, I asked Newfane, they had one that they traded. They got, they tried to sell it outright and only got 12.
Right.
So, I, I mean
Well, I didn't know if there's any towns, you know, if there's anything you can reach out to other within the state or whatever.
Right. Um, I, I could, I, I think we'll, I think we'll have a lot better luck selling the big truck outright. And I think another town, I think another town will a little less
Appreciate your efforts doing that.
Yeah.
Just gotta do my due diligence.
Yeah, fine.
Okay, are you satisfied? Um, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
We have a motion.
I have a second.
All in favor? Okay. Next is the update on the hydrocedar.
Yes. We, Jay and I placed the order for the hydrocedar for the grant that we had received last fall. So, that, we should see that within, we ordered it a couple of weeks ago. So, probably like four weeks or so, we should see it. And we're working on building a shared, how would you put it? Who's responsible for what and whatnot on, we're working on getting that put together, and we'll bring it before the board, you know, so you guys can look it over and make sure it's what you wanna, with the shared deal between the two towns. Who's responsible for what and stuff, yeah.
Okay. It sounds good. We look forward to seeing that. Any questions about the hydrocedar arriving? And the plan. Next, we have issues with paving from last year.
Yes. We have had some blacktop peeling up on our new pavement that we did last fall. I've been in contact with Allstate's asphalt, and I'm gonna be meeting with them very soon to see if we can resolve this matter.
So, to refresh everybody, they were late getting here.
Yeah, they were very late getting here. Yep.
And does that because it was late and it was, whatever the temperature was, or whatever the
I don't think so. I think, I think I, I'm leaning towards, you know, either a shortage of material or not decent enough quality of material myself. That's what I'm looking into right now. Nothing is 100% sure, but I've got, I've reached out to them, and they said they're willing to look at it with me, so.
What is the normal guarantee on pavement?
I don't know, but I, I mean, you shouldn't be peeling it up the first winter. I just think it's, you know, I'm wondering if it was too thin, the top layer. I don't, I don't know. But I'm, I'm definitely gonna, I've definitely reached out to them, and I'm looking into it, because it's, I'm not happy with it.
We'll be anxious to hear back from your man.
Yeah, yeah.
And next is a clarification on the senior pricing at the transfer station.
Yes, Chris came to me and asked if people were, came in with over their two, their allotted $2 bags per week, should he be charging them the $3, or just keep everything a dollar? You know what I mean?
Joe?
So, my question back is, what did he do in the past?
He charged them the full, the full rate per bag. The 250. Okay.
You just answered your question.
Okay. I just wanted to
Sarah, how often does it happen?
I guess it does happen, but I, I don't, he, he came to me with it, because it did happen, and, you know, it's bound to, so he just wasn't sure, and I was like, well, we'll, I'll ask the board for clarification on it. We'll make sure what you guys wanted to do, if it was just a dollar, no matter what, or if you wanted to then go to 350 after the allotment.
It's three.
Or, yeah, three.
Got rid of the senses.
Yep.
You have no senses anymore.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, what does the board feel about that? We heard from Joe.
You heard from me?
They were being charged 250.
I think that, I think that if, if this is a pattern that Chris has already established, that there's no reason to change it.
Okay.
I, I agree as well.
Alright.
The four of us all agree.
Yep.
Yes?
What's the age? What's a senior?
62.
Not there yet.
I am, baby. Alright, so Travis, do you understand the board agrees that it's, you're keeping the same policy we had before?
Same, yep.
The dollar, and then it goes to the three.
Three, yep.
Okay.
Got it. Yes, thank you.
Do you, do you have anything else for us tonight?
No.
Alright, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, now we have the assessor. And Linda?
So, first, I want to introduce Susan, and I'll see if I can pronounce it, Sven Senko. Very good. We're gonna practice. So, our chairless board. She's already amazing, awesome.
Thank you.
Good decision. I totally appreciate, I've already been able to handle a huge chunk of work that I wasn't able to get to, and I, I think my shoulders are now where they're supposed to be, and not up by my ears. So, thank you, and thank the board for that also.
It's nice to meet you. Maybe, maybe the board should introduce themselves to Susan.
Susan knows me.
Is that Joe?
Joe Mahan.
He's up interviewer. He had a hat on, though.
Scott Salwa. Dan Ballyati's missing. We introduce each other, through each other.
Sarah Shippy.
Hi, nice to meet everybody.
Nice to meet you, and welcome to the the town.
Been a lot of fun.
Cool. Alright, now Linda, let's talk about the RFP for the townwide appraisal.
Okay, so y'all got what I sent. And then I just went ahead and sent the proposals. It's Joe.
There's a copy there of both. I have one, your recommendation, and then there's the other one right here. If people didn't have a chance to look at.
So, I didn't receive any questions prior to, so is it safe to say you're going, taking our recommendation, or are there further questions?
I, I have one question, and I just, I thought it would be easier just to ask it here. So, if I convert with the, your recommended, which is the New England Municipal Consultants?
Yeah.
We have to convert all of our data to a different database. Can you tell me the benefits of that versus the, the one we're currently using?
Okay, so New England Municipal Consultants, I feel they offer, for one thing, which is huge, better customer service. And that's huge in this business, just because the way things are going, to be able to contact somebody in a few towns over as opposed to in another state or whatever, is just, that's just a big piece. Looking over as far as what comes out on the property card and the data that goes in, to me, it feels that there's more included in that, and so for appraisers, people interested in buying property, what have you, they're gonna get more information from that particular card than what I've even given them now.
So, their database, what you're saying is, by converting everything over to their database, there's more information that we can, we can use and gather than is currently available under the existing database.
Exactly.
That wasn't really clear to me, so okay, okay. Okay, Tabby has a comment.
I had an opportunity to talk to the tech person or one of the people from that this afternoon, just to ask some questions about that, and just even in the brief conversation, the reporting that we'll be able to get out of this system that's being recommended gives you a lot more flexibility, flexibility to actually look into the database and get more detailed reporting as you're trying to figure things out, and it's an easier structure to be able to get the reports out. So, that was something that, you know, I was excited to hear about, and there's some other additional features that this new program would offer that we can take advantage of that was not available in the one that we're currently using. So, just from an IT and usability, and what are we getting for our money, we, so far, again, in a half-hour conversation, it seems that we'll be able to get more out of the product.
The other big piece for me is being able to obtain ratio reports, which I'm not really able to do that right now, and that's pretty big evaluation as far as market adjustments and where to, you know, lift what end of the scale to hopefully, I mean, obviously, our numbers are skewed at this point, but once they're back level, it, it, to me, it's gonna be easier to keep that more of a balance depending on the market, of course. The other piece with the program we're currently using, he, Russ Bowman sort of semi-retired, so he says, and at this point, there's nobody coming up, you know, really to replace him. I mean, I, I know Manitron, Ammentum, whatever they are now, they're, they'll send somebody. Obviously, there's other towns in the state that are still using this program. Wilmington, I know one, never had a camp system, program. And with that last evaluation, they actually went with ProVal, and I won't say it's the, it's not the software problem, but I heard through the grapevine that pretty much was a somewhat of a, dare I say, disaster. Did not go well. Not sure where they're at with it now. I just, Susan and I went to Newfane, which we put in that report there, and they've used this company. They were one of the first towns to go with this company when they first came into Vermont, and that was the best idea that we did that. She is more than thrilled. I don't know what more I can say about that.
And the other question I had was, the $3,500 annual support and license fee, that's to be able to continue to access that database, and then for them to call, to support when you need, when you need things? With, tell me about the license fee. I don't understand that.
Okay, I'm not sure I will be able to. Well, I mean, you need licensing to use any software.
So, this is basically the charge for that, and then their support personnel to help you?
Correct. So, this is their annual maintenance fee, which currently we have that as well, plus the rate tables for Marshall and Swift, which are the cost tables, which was not included in this, so I did question him. They create their own tables, so unless I specifically say, I want you to use Marshall and Swift, there wouldn't be that additional charge piece. So, I kinda like that, because that makes the cost even less to the town, because now Ammentum is over 4,000 40, let's call it 4,800 a year, plus the rate tables at 1,100, 1,200 a year. So, to go down to 3,500 and to have somebody you know, right in Ludlow, one of the guys that's in, is in Ludlow, so.
Okay. Are there other questions of Linda? Concerning her recommendation to go with the New England Municipal Consultants? And the timeline, just for everybody, because a lot of people don't understand when this is potentially gonna happen. They're gonna convert the data in 2022 if we choose them. They're gonna do the property listing beginning the summer of 2023, completed in the fall of 2024, property review in March of 2025. And then, so, late May, May is when valuation notices will come out of 2025, and then grievance hearings after that. So, that's, it's a, it's a, it's a long process.
It's a long process, and they, they will be, if you all choose for this, they will be actually looking for data collectors. It's that rough out there right now with appraisers, assessors, anyone in this field. It's far between, far between.
Jim?
This is for residential properties only, correct?
No. It's a town line. The only thing this does not include is Mount Snow. And that could be a separate discussion, or if we choose to dive, we'll dive, but.
So, this proposal is for $345,000, which is $98 per parcel, and it's a, that is a 3,500 annual support and license fee. The other proposal, and we only received two, was for 332,500. So, the difference between the two is fairly minimal.
$3 a parcel. And, and just to clarify, that's how these companies, they don't break down, you know, this amount of money for this work, and it's a per, done on a per parcel basis. NIMRIC that we use for our fund accounting program, they're charging anywhere from 100 to 150 a parcel. And everyone is getting slammed. I think the state is really up, gonna be up against some hard stuff right now. They're gonna have to come up with something, just because we're not mandated here yet to do a revo, but I really wanted to jump on this, because everybody's jumping on. And the towns that are mandated, actually, there was only about 20 or so, but these guys are chomping at the bit, just to be able to cover what needs to be covered for the state.
Uh, can you tell me how much money we have in our reappraisal fund?
I can. Or, or it's like roughly $476,000. So, it would leave us with a little over 125,000 to, I don't, really don't wanna drain it. That's not a good idea, so I think the 125 is a good to, you know, again, for the next one. Hopefully, we can do statistical adjustments and not wait 12 years. uh statistical adjustments and not wait 12 years. Um. So I also did a little interesting thing. The last townwide reappraisal, which was done for 2010, was roughly around 271,000. So between the difference, it's only like 78,000 roughly from that time to now, which is really, we're not talking a big change. I don't think that's a big change in the scheme of things. And we have more parts, true.
Do you know how many grievances we ended up having to hear?
Oh, my gosh.
Cause it's a very exhausting process for.
We were in grievances. I don't think that's acceptable. So we had, I wanna say 600 maybe, that sort of sticks in my mind. Um, I think I don't know, I can't say we've, I obviously, we're gonna have some cause that's just the nature of the beast. I don't see it as such a terrifying thing, maybe for some people.
He's not scared.
So some of those you resolve before they go through the BCA. So though it's not 600 to the BCA.
Once the, right, but we were in BCA hearings until that following February or March, I think, I can remember. That was a long process. Um, there were extenuating circumstances. Jim Boyle's partner broke her hip at the time, so she was kinda out of the room. Um. But there is a, a good period of time that's taken right after the numbers are released that people can come in and say, you know, no, this, this is incorrect data, whatever. So some of those can be taken care of right away um or by grievance. And I think, yeah, it's a grueling process, but in the end, if we come out with some good numbers and I equalize balanced town, I think it's worth it. And I, when y'all go to your checkbooks, pay your taxes, maybe it's not gonna be so bad. I don't know.
Any questions for Linda from anybody? Does somebody wanna make a motion then? If not, there's no other discussion.
Do we have, are we all signing or do you sign a contract or how do we?
I haven't seen a contract.
We don't have a contract yet. It, it goes, it goes to you.
I guess what I'm asking is, if we make a motion to accept your recommendation, are we authorizing the chair to sign it? Are we, or is the whole board signing it? That's, I just wanna put that in the motion.
Yes, Joe.
So we just have a proposal, not an actual laid out.
Correct.
So maybe the motion should be to move forward.
Right, cause you're, you're.
Okay, yeah.
So I make a motion that we authorize our uh um to authorize the chairman to request a formal proposal and contract from New England Municipal Consultants.
Anything else? Any other comments?
I'm, I'm gonna try to go over New Fane and look at the different systems, just cause I spend a lot of time
I have.
Lister's office.
If you don't, Joe, I can leave you these copies. I have some property cards that yours was.
I'd like to go over and just talk. As a board member, I'd like to just go over and talk and just.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Uh.
I, thank you, Assessor Office. Now that it's more than one person, Department, Office, the Office of the Assessor.
Come visit anytime.
Unfinished business. We have the Planning Commission appointment. I see Kevin has joined us too. Our Planning Commission reached out to us to try to help facilitate getting um one of the members um to commit to either staying on or resigning. We have heard nothing, to my knowledge, via emails or letters or anything. Um, this person is not, maybe, maybe Kevin, you can speak how active Brendan McGreal has been on the Planning Commission.
Hi, um, I think he might have attended the first meeting two Januaries ago.
So at this point, um we need to, the way the board can remove Brendan McGreal from the Planning Commission is to have a uh motion to remove him. The board has to, and then second, and the board has to unanimously agree to remove Brendan from, because he did not resign and has not communicated um to remove him from the Planning Commission so that we can reappoint someone. So is that something the board wants to do?
Yes, I make a motion that we remove Brendan McGreal from the Planning Commission.
Sorry. Any discussion?
Does it matter?
No.
Okay. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's four to nothing. And because Dan is not here, I assume that still counts. Right. Okay, so do we want to appoint somebody at this point to the Planning Commission? We have a letter of interest from Patrick LaGrange. Hi, Patrick.
Hi.
What do you say? Hold on, I wanted to ask Kevin.
Well, you can do that first.
You can, you can do that first and then I can ask Kevin.
So make a motion that we appoint Patrick LaGrange to uh the open seat on the Planning Commission.
And that term expires 2023, I believe? It's, it's the, the remaining term.
For the remainder of the, of the open term.
Anybody want to second that so we can talk about it? Okay, Kevin?
Yes.
Um, so we have a letter from Patrick, which the board has read. Um, any, is this your recommendation as well?
Uh, yeah, I would um recommend that um he join. Um, he's attended a couple of meetings. He's been helpful and energetic. And I, I think it would be a good addition.
Do you wanna say anything, Patrick?
Um, sure. Uh, well, uh, just to introduce to those that I haven't met, um, my wife and I had our house here in town since 2006. Um, you know, we were second homeowners and then we moved here full time in 2019. And uh, you know, we, we both kind of, she's been involved in some other things in uh Trans American. Uh, I was encouraged to try to find a way to get involved and we'll think this would be a great way to get involved and have something that the town could use to be done.
So, thank you, thank you. So this term would expire town meeting 2020 or at reorganizational meeting or it, I don't know exactly when the date of the expiration is, Jeanette, do you know?
If it's the same as DRB, it's the end of March or the end of the month in which town, town meeting is held.
So it's a, it was a four-year term and it expires 2023, so I'm guessing it's probably in, in March or if the town meeting has to be postponed again another time. May, yeah.
It, it's the, the end of the month in which town meeting is held.
Okay. What?
Do we pay the playing for the share?
They play, pay like all other, it's there in that article that you just saw, the war, you just.
Sure.
Except for the people who show up as volunteers.
Um, any other discussion?
Hi, Vicky.
Hi, Michelle.
Who's this? Michelle, also from the Planning Commission. Um, just a question for you for procedure. Uh, very happy to have Patrick join. Um, we've had Peter as an alternate whose term, I guess, just expired. So I guess I'm just wondering what the procedure is. Since he's been with us, should he, should he also get the option for the full time or does it not matter? Cause I don't think we publicized that a seat was available. I just wanna make sure we're doing the right thing as a planning commission.
Your question?
Hi, I reached out to Peter. Um, he was traveling today, but he is going to be submitting a letter to the board stating his desire to remain as an alternate member.
Peter?
Peter McDonald.
Okay. And to, he'd have to be reappointed as an alternate.
Or, but he is interested in staying as an alternate as opposed to coming.
Did, did you, did you hear that, Michelle?
I did. I guess my question got answered. Thanks, Tabby.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome. Thank you, thank you for helping. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, now the next thing we have is revisi, the continuation of adult children on health insurance. So I, everybody saw information that Jeanette received um from the state, from the Consumer and Business Support Services of Blue Cross Blue Shield, stating that all dependents, once they turn 26, they are terminated at the end of the month in which they turn 26. So that kind of takes, takes that off, but, but thank you for clarifying that. We don't think we've ever had this question asked before and so hopefully, um, we can buy something through the exchange or through the program.
He would probably do much better through COVID.
Yeah, and the only reason why I asked you right up there is when I called them to look at moving forward for him, that's when I found out that if the town voted, they could go ahead and do that. So that's why, why I had no fear. And then uh, I found out the same stuff.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that, researching into that. And thank you for bringing the question, cause it's a good thing to know. Okay, the next thing we're gonna have is consider the cost letter from KSA for the quarterly drinking water sampling. So KSA is our, yeah, I'm sorry, KAS is our engineering firm, environmental science and engineering firm we've employed to help us deal with PFAS up at the common and particular kids in the country. Um, this particular monitoring is for the abutting wells. This is not doing anything with kids in the country. These are other wells that have shown potential low, lower levels of contaminant. And so there's three wells around the common that need to be monitored quarterly. They need to be uh tested. They need um you know, somebody's gonna come and collect samples. And this, for a 12-month, which is a four-sampling cycle, the cost is $15,230. So um, this PFAS issue is going to hit everywhere and it's gonna be so expensive. That's my, it, these are the, those chemicals that nobody knew how bad they were and they're, they're everywhere. They're at, we have them at the landfill, not, not surprising, but having an old school site is, is eye-opening to me, anyway. Scott?
Just, I, I see that this is like carries out till January 23rd. This this can be forever. Are we always going to, like, how long is this testing?
Jeanette?
If we end up, well, we're moving towards drilling a new route that can alleviate new issues.
But if these wells continue to show high or, or rising levels of PFAS, they, it's pretty clear the contaminant is somewhere on town property.
Yeah, cause to be clear, this is for not where we're getting, these are.
These are 174 Tap, 186 Tap Brook and five Cooper Hill, three wells that um are, at this point, we will also be doing well monitoring potentially in the neighborhood of the landfill. So this is the beginning of a very expensive process to figure out what is going on with groundwater. So I don't think we have much choice in this. It's uh Kevin? Can you, Kevin? Can you check your mute?
Thank you. Now, yeah, I was just curious if there's a way we could get another quote from another company on this. I know the uh Saltways District in Brattleville has to use KAS to do the monitoring on their, their site as well, so it just, it just seems like a lot of money and maybe, maybe there's somebody else out there. I don't know if there's any competition in this field or not.
We have used KAS repeatedly and they're, they're the project manager over the whole common issue, uh the daycare issue with the water. They're trying to set us a new well and all these things are continued, you know, some of these tests we need to do to make sure that we are siding a well that hopefully is out of the pollution clone. Um, so it's a very, I mean, we would have to go back and start over with another engineering company. They're also working with us at the landfill as well. So it could be at this point, it could set us back and it could be more expensive, cause we would have to start from scratch, cause these guys have done a lot of the subsurface mapping and various other things in the, in the neighborhood. They seem very competent. It's expensive. Just the um laboratory analysis for PFAS out of that 15,000 is almost 7,000. So that's and they have to send them to specific labs um that, that do it. And so they're not even, they're not even doing those tests. Anything else? Uh, Eric? ARPA money for these, this um, these drinking water issues?
From everything that I've read so far, we, we would be able to use those dollars towards this project.
Thank you. Are?
We are.
Yeah, yes.
I think there are some other grants available on the state as well.
So how do we pursue that? Cause this, this is, this is gonna be really expensive.
The.
All thing. Yes, Eric?
So the grant that just ca, great, uh, Jeanette, I don't know if you're referring to the grant that just came out. I'm sorry, what was that?
I think it was Clean Water Initiative. Um, and I, I don't recall it exactly.
Okay. I, I will see if that's a separate program from what they're doing with the wells and septic systems. Uh, because I know that that's for uh privately owned land and for people who make less than 120,000 dollars a year. So we obviously wouldn't qualify for that, but I will look into, I hadn't heard about that, so I will look into that as well. Maybe we can use that money as well.
So Eric, uh while we're on the topic, this is a little off talk, this particular one, but could you give everybody the one minute of what that program is and for those, it's drinking water and wastewater systems for uh single-family homes or a family, a single-family home with one apartment? Uh, is there anything more you can fill in on that for us?
No, I, I would, I would honestly, anyone who's interested in the, in the program, like I said, I kinda gave you the brief overview there. It's, it's private landowners. Um. There's a, there's a max income of 120,000 dollars a year on the program, but it basically, you can, you can look to correct existing problems with a well or septic system on your property. Uh, to get the best information from it and to look into webinars that the state is offering. Um, there is actually a news item on the front of doughofvermont.com, our town website. Uh, you can visit there and it, it will link you off to the Vermont Agency of Natural Resources where you can find all of the information on the program that you would desire.
It's a, it's a good program if, if you have a drinking water or wastewater um issue. So um, it's grant money. Okay, so. Okay, so back to the, um, KAS monitoring plan. Do we want to make a motion to move forward with this? I, I don't think we have a choice.
I make a motion that we move forward, that we approve the, um, private drinking well sampling, well sampling. Proposal from KAS in the amount of fifteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars.
All in favor? Aye. All right, now we're going to go into economic development.
Uh, Vicky, I will just hop back to that topic for a moment. If you are interested in taking part in any of that grant money. Um, I would definitely look into it ASAP because it may seem like a large amount of money, but when you start looking at well and septic projects. Throughout the state, that money could go very, very quickly. So if you have questions, reach out to us or visit the, the news item on the website.
Yeah, I think the deadline is April fifteenth, um, and they're encouraging it first come, first served, so get on it.
Absolutely. Okay, so on Friday, I shared with the board and Jeanette, five documents that make up our Dover Trails and Recreation Process Documents. These have been the probably most interactive discussions we've had at our Trails and Recreation meetings since we got together. Uh, basically, you know, we kept referring to these standards that we were looking for and these guidelines that we'd like to follow. And, you know, it was very obvious that we didn't have anything in writing on these. So, um, I took a stab at them, put them in front of the group. A huge shout out to Sarah Shippey and Julia LaGrange who, uh, you know, kind of tediously tore through those documents for me and made changes and, and, um, updates, uh, after each conversation with the, the Trails and Recreation Committee. Basically, what we'd like to do is have you affirm these as our, our Trails and Recreation processes, processes. And, um, you know, with the understanding that because we've never really had anything like this in place before, as we go through this process. There may be a need for more discussion, discussion and changes at the Trails and Rec level, um, and, and more approvals from you guys. But we just wanted to get something in place to, to kind of lay out these guidelines as to how we move forward with this thing. And the biggest piece of this, and I, I say it till I'm blue in the face, is that we are in no way, shape or form trying to hinder expansion or growth or, or maintenance or any of those things. We just, we really want to set those guidelines so that we make sure that we're following the plan, uh, that was laid out for us with Weston and Sampson. And that all of our, our offerings are built to the town standard, um, and, you know, under these rules. Did anybody have any questions for me on these documents?
I, I just noted that there were some formatting issues, but I have been assured that those formatting and spacing issues will be, uh, rectified. So we're just basically approving these for the content and the formatting will be fixed.
Correct. I apologize. We were working back and forth through a couple of different programs there and then they got turned to PDFs and things got a little crazy. So yes, it is for the content, not the formatting.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions about these five documents? How about the public? Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, this has been a, this has been a lot of work for, by the Trails Committee, Trails and Rec Committee, and I'm so happy. You guys worked through it. I know it was a lot of energy and I appreciate that. So with that, we'll take a, a motion to approve these documents.
I make a motion that we approve the Trails and Recreation Project Documents as presented by the Economic Development Department.
Anything else? Anybody? All in favor? Aye. Okay, next, we're going to come back to camping at Crosstown Trailhead Parking Lot.
Okay, so I apologize for springing this on everyone in public comments last time. We got it on the agenda this time. I see that Tracy is there. I think I see Keith in the back as well. Hey, Keith. So Keith was the concerned resident who brought this matter to our attention in the first place. Did you, Keith, did you want to give a, a brief summary of what it is that you've been seeing at the, at the parking lot?
It just like after maybe four months into it, so about summer, you noticed it being more. And then ski season hit and I think it kind of picked up a little more because I don't think people could like park their vans at the mouth. I think they kicked them out, I think they did it for it. And then when I went down, I was gone for like a week or two. But when I came home Friday night, I flew in late from Europe to Logan's and the home was like warm and dry. There was a man. I, I go with either so you can see it. The weekend before there were two. I've seen like three there like one time. Usually it's one, two. It's, it's sporadic. It's just. So I picked up a lot of, like, when I was more in the winter, like, if these trash, just the cloud was supposed to pile. You know, we see it, you know, if it misses one, but then in the spring, it's kind of a mess, but. Like, did somebody see it, like IPD cannons or needles? I picked up some needles, not like they were diabetics or something. So there's been some, some of that, but it's just a strange, I think it's sort of like the van was like a phenomenon. People couldn't travel, then they could, and then they could stain the wall. You know, people work from, so it's like a lifestyle. I think maybe on social media, they post, it might be in that loop. I don't, I don't know, you know?
Did you see open campfires?
I didn't for, well, I, the guy was kind of started. This is back before. See, like, before Thanksgiving, it was still no snow, but kind of wet and the guy was making a fire. And I told him, that's probably not the best thing. It was just dead fog. But there's been like crazy, like it's like a picnic, like dogs. So I, I don't know. Is it the, is it the end of the world? No, but it's a, it's kind of a quality life for people that go down there, you know? More quality life issue, you know? His house is down, I don't know if it was on the street or across the street.
Well, thank you for bringing it to town's attention. We appreciate it.
But I always thought it was a sign like on the other end by the golf course, I thought it was a sign closed, like, you know. Uh, dust had dawned. I thought it was a sign on the other end. Maybe that's God. At one point, they removed that close Mount Snow, the, in the golf parking lot there. Because I've got a couple warnings from people up there. You just see it, I mean, it's still down.
I think the trails are used at night, like for nighttime snowshoeing or skiing. So there, I mean, if you were going to close them at dusk, that would make that impossible. Eric?
Yeah, I, I don't want to see a situation where we're closing those trails at night because there are user groups who snowshoe at night. Who, who take moonlight walks during the summer at night, um, you know, on those trails. And I don't, it's, it's a sticky situation, right? We don't want to not, not let anybody in there who's trying to use those trails. But that being said, we also don't want, we don't want to set the precedent that it's okay to be camping on those properties or any other properties that, you know, Mount Snow or the town are affiliated with. So I think that's, that's my biggest concern is that, you know, we kind of squash the camping while still allowing people to use those trails whenever they want. In talking with Tracy, who I see is there as well, um, you know, she had expressed, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Tracy, but that you are also not interested in having camping at that location, uh, but you were also not interested in maybe monitoring that at this time. Is that correct?
Yeah, so for Mount Snow, we own the land, obviously, but we let town, you know, town residents use it. And I think that it would be prudent for all of us to look at coming into an agreement. Because I think the roads for town of Dover actually maintained and plowed that lot. We don't plow it in the wintertime. And so we should probably come up with a formal agreement. We have an agreement with the Southern Vermont Trails Association to use the trails, maintain the trails. And that's not on, that's not, not, not Mount Snow. We own the land, but Southern Vermont Trail Association, um, is the one that maintains the trails. They're supposed to be picking up the trash or needles or any of that kind of stuff. Um, so that's all, Southern Vermont Trails, that's not in the agreement.
So Eric?
So Tracy, I apologize. We actually came across an agreement that is already in place that names us as, Randy, correct me if I'm wrong. That names us as an agent for Mount Snow on that piece, particular parking lot, correct?
Is, uh, should I have the agreement right here?
Okay. Tracy, I'm sorry. I didn't get that to you before the, before the meeting, but we do already have that agreement in place. We would like to.
No camping signs and, uh.
No camping. So what's your recommendation, Eric?
So at this time, my recommendation would be to hang signs in the parking lot stating that camping is not allowed at the parking lot. And so basically, no camping, no fires. Okay? I don't believe that right now, in, in my opinion, we need to have the larger discussion about how that is policed. Because we, we could be potentially dealing with a situation where these people just didn't understand that that's not something that is okay. Because technically in the national forest, you can camp, right? So there's, there's different rules for different pieces of property and they may just be unaware that this particular property is not open for camping. So it is my recommendation that we purchase the signs that say, you know, no camping. And no, oh, you know, no fires and I, and we monitor from there to see if the, the situation addresses itself before we go down this large rabbit hole about how we would be policing it and what we would need to be doing to get people out of there. Randy, if you disagree, please let me know. I know we didn't get a chance to talk about this prior, um, but that's, that would be my recommendation to start.
Right, so I brought this up to my staff the following day after. And some of the officers said that they have seen, you know, some people there at night. They've never been called there for any issues. They've never saw a campfire. Um, and they have one staff member say, why are we kicking them out if there's not an issue? All we're doing is chasing them around town, you know, if they're going onto a property. So I told them, I go, well, you know what, it's, it works decision. The only thing I would add maybe to, you know, maybe with the signage is, and this is probably more of a, you know, just my opinion. Is when we deal with people, if you're going to put signs up, is maybe put a timeframe. Because when you say no camping, you know, who's not to say someone's just pulled in there at three o'clock in the morning just to, you know, be there with their significant other. I'll put it that way. But yeah, other than trying to put some, because, you know, I think if you're going to put it, I really think you should have, have a timeframe. What's considered camping is someone pulls in there and with their, you know, I think so. That would be my opinion and then worry about the police income later on. So instead of going back, because I did not reach out to the state's attorney to ask her anything, because once I saw this, I knew that the town already had a disagreement, an agent on behalf of Mount Snow to do, you know, what they wish. And in this, there are, like, you can't have more than ten parking cars parked in there. Uh, the town is supposed to pay Mount Snow one dollar a year for this, I, you know.
I'm sure we've been doing that.
So I can only imagine, interest is not, um, anyway, this goes back to two thousand nine. So really, my only thing is if you put out signs, then instead of getting signs and then replacing them later on. Is that, I think you should have a timeframe on these signs.
Like no overnight camping or something like that?
Consider overnight camping. I mean, someone pulls in there and, you know, how, how are you, I didn't determine if they're camping. If someone was in there in their car and they're sleeping there overnight, is that camping because they're homeless? You know, I mean, so that's why I'm, I'm saying this in, in an overall, I think you should have a time thing. It's got to be a catch off.
Sorry, I didn't hear that? And then we'll go to.
I, I was going to say overnight, but perhaps midnight to six AM. Because like you said, people want to do moonlight skis or, you know, moonlight. Snowshoeing at night is really nice and in the, and in the summer, you know, it's, there's days when it's light until nine, so.
Well, hold on, hold on. Joe had his hand up. Joe?
Seeing that the police department is going to be the one to police it, what would your recommendation be on time? So that would work good for the police department.
Well, I would say that, you know, maybe the midnight. I mean, I, I don't know. I don't go out in, in light walk and I don't know what people do. I mean, is there a timeframe that, you know, people are still out there? I, I don't know. Maybe midnight to six, like Sarah suggested then. So, you know, that way we're, we're still out at a certain time, so maybe before they go home, maybe do a sweep and make sure that everybody's gone.
I don't know, midnight, obviously midnight during the summer.
Okay, just.
I'm just thinking in my head, sorry.
Sarah?
I was just going to say, if, as somebody who has gone moonlight skiing, midnight's not a reasonable winter.
Scott, can we, can we go forward with the, just no overnight? If that ends up being an issue again, where we have people that are, that are, seem like they're breaking this, then maybe revisit it. But I hope that no overnight, just. It's our first solid move and.
Okay.
And I'll add to that, that the police department can make that curfew time. Or that overnight cover too.
Or you could just say. Hold on, no side, side bars. Jessica?
Uh, yes, I was just going to say that it becomes complicated when it comes, like Randy was saying about homeless people, that's true. So maybe it would become a problem later if you don't deal with it now, because it could become like a legal thing about, is it a human right, this and that. So maybe you could suggest, um, you could get, you could direct people to where they can park overnight. So you can promote the summer thing, you know, but just get them out of that area instead of getting into a legal fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Randy, would you prefer overnight or midnight to six?
I want a time. I don't want overnight. What's considered overnight?
Right.
When, you know, you've got a definition of overnight, you know, so as far as statute and everything's concerned, I, I would want a time. And I believe there is a place, I'm going to cut me off there wrong, but I think someone's told me in our office meeting that up on Hogbad. People can camp up there. I don't know if anybody knows that or not. And a lot way across from Skyline.
I think six AM is a seasonal thing. I mean, six AM in the summertime, a lot of people are up and out at four thirty or five o'clock because it's daylight. And that's a time when people like to get on trails potentially because it's early. So I think putting a number, a, a, a hard number is based on time. Based on, the summer is completely different than the winter.
So do we make midnight until sunrise?
How about sunrise to sunset?
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, Dan, did you have your hand up? Because I missed that. I'm sorry.
Sunrise to sunset.
I think we just talked about some of the reasons why we can't do it sunrise to sunset. Or sunset to sunrise, because people use them in the middle of the night. Okay, Eric, and, and then I'll move back to this, the live audience. Eric?
So I just want to clarify, we're talking about camping, not usage, right? So. You know, Shannon, my amazing assistant director just sent me a sign that says no overnight camping in parking lot. Okay, there are no times on it, but it, it basically just states like you cannot park, you cannot camp in the parking lot. It doesn't say you can't use the trails at night, and I know that that creates a gray area if there's a car there. But I mean, there, there would be a difference between somebody there, you know, using a trail and somebody there who's set up and camping in the parking lot. I would, I feel.
Sarah? Um, I, I apologize for forgetting your name. Keith, when you've seen people there, are they camping in cars? Or are you saying it's like a van kind of a situation?
I was going to say the simple, the simple size of, I'm not expert on. I was gonna say, the sample size, I'm not an expert on, it's like a Sprinter man with a solar panel. It's a four porch. Or the people that, you know, it's sort of like, oh, just like a mini man that's camping in the front, they have a silver. You know, like curtains in the front, so they're probably there for the night versus. If you just kind of don't snowshoe and be back by midnight or morning, or full room night, you know, there's, like, there's a, you know. Deliberation between a user and an overnight, you can kind of tell, and then you. Cause like at times, you, like the one guy said, I was, well lately, I said, I'm not sure you can camp. And he said, well, there's no signs, I can stay as long as I want, but you have like a gas grill. And a, and a Sprinter, a solar panel.
He was hunkered down.
But he had a sign, then.
But I, I think that Randy's, the, the sign is, I think, with some people, you have to. To better support the police, like this is the times, or they're gonna be wiggled, that's what I see, because they're pretty hard on users.
Yeah.
I mean, they're. They're dogging the time, you know?
Sarah, yeah, okay, well, I was just gonna say, so it's, it sounds like. The, the people who you have at least witnessed using it in that fashion, look like they're camping. Like there's, it's not a gray kind of a, well, it's a, it's an SUV and they're sleeping in the backseat.
Yeah, like an inverter.
They're like, said.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, just, I remind everybody, just one person speaking at a time. And it should all go through, through me. Um, and so there shouldn't, we, we should not be cross-talking, no. All right. Let's see, Jessica, do you have your hand up again, or did you not put it down?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't put it down, I thought it was gonna be done, I'll take it down now.
Thank you. Anything else?
So.
Randy?
So I'll just, I'll just, I'm just gonna just add again that, as far as I'm concerned, you know, the police department. Dealing with statute laws, with the way things go, you're asking us to force something. You know, you better make it clear, because if you have somebody that's. Say in, in a vehicle that he described, and we think that that's camping. And you have someone that's sleeping in their car, you're kicking the camper out, or you're allowing that person to sleep there. We're not, I'm gonna tell myself when I'm enforcing it. And that right now. So it's, because that's a really sticky point, and then when you get into court. You know, it's gonna be, it's gonna get brought up, if it ever goes that far. So in my opinion, it has, if you want, and later on. To us enforce it, and like Eric said, you know, see how it plays out now. You know, and stuff, and I'm just gonna tell my staff that if, you know, if you see somebody there, we're not enforcing it right now. Until we get a directive from the board, and at that point, that is when I'm gonna probably request, depending on the signage. You know, that it's gotta stay, so it's like literally, you know, no one, I mean, right here, and in part of it. D, licensee. Which is the town of Dover, is hereby required to appropriately supervise the area. Including instructions that vehicles cannot be left overnight without risk of being towed. All signs inserted on Mount Snow property must be approved by Mount Snow prior to being placed on the site. Licensees shall also be obligated to keep the area clean and free of litter. Trash and stuff will shall be empty on a regular basis by the licensee. I don't know if you guys probably may wanna just look at this, you know, at some point. Andy gave Eric and I, you know, this last week. So, um, again. If it's something you're gonna ask us to force, it's gonna be all vehicles or no vehicles. It's gonna play, depending on what size, because somebody's sleeping in the backseat.
Tracy?
What if the sign says something like Trailhead Parking? And so you avoid the issue of camping or not camping, and so it's just Trailhead Use Parking, or something like that? So if somebody's sleeping in it, or anything else, they're not using the trail.
At that point, yeah, I mean, if they're waking up, ready to go out and go hiking, then they can out there and go hiking.
Yeah.
You know, at three in the morning, so.
If there's somebody sleeping in the car like that, then it's not camping.
Eric?
So that's, Randy, this is exactly why I had mentioned, you know, at this point, I don't believe that we need to discuss, discuss. You know, necessarily the enforcement of said signs. So again, these, these signs that Shannon just pulled up, they are brown, they're the typical. Trail, you know, outdoor recreation sign, you see all around the state. It says no overnight camping in parking lot, it's got a tent with a cross through it and a van with a cross through it. They're thirty-six dollars for a reflective sign. So realistically. We could buy two to three of these, hang them in the parking lot. There you go, can everybody see Shannon on, well, at least a portion of Shannon's picture there on the screen? So these are thirty-six dollars apiece. And they're reflective, eh, eh, literally thinking of purchasing at maximum three of these signs to hang there. Because it may just address the issue. I don't think we need to have this much larger and broader discussion at this time about the enforcement of the sign. You know, I'm not expecting, you know, Randy, your guys to go in there. And start pulling people out at this point, all I wanna do is hang some signs to see if it, if it addresses the problem.
And I find you that, it's just, you, yeah, we're not, I just try to think, down the road. You know, when the road is there, then obviously you're gonna have to come up with something.
Joe?
So we may wanna put one of these over where we have the other parking spot. Over by the trail, you know where the park is, up in there. So, to be inconsistent, like not put one at one parking lot, not, those are like the two parking spots that the town. If Kaplan is okay with that.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, that's overflow parking for the park.
I just don't want it to move from one spot to the next spot, so do we wanna trust?
Well, we also have the town forest, which we're expanding the parking lot.
Which, which probably do that too, so they all go out at the same time, so that they can't seem to.
Topscotch?
Exactly.
What do you think about that, Eric?
I'm totally okay with that, um, if anybody, so what I can do. Is prior to the next meeting, get a count, if, if that's the way you, you know, you wanna move forward, I can just get a count of how many we think we should have. Uh, and tell you at the next meeting where those are going, I can speak to Rich Kaplan or anybody else with a parking lot where we feel it might be an issue. The, the main reason that this came up is that, you know, again, we have that agreement with Mount Snow and, and so. That's where this comes from, so yes, we had also, Vicky, you and I had discussed the town forest, absolutely. Uh, and I believe we have an agreement signed with Mr. Kaplan on the property. Uh, behind Dover Forge OMT as well. Beyond that, you know, I don't see. If anybody thinks of any other town, you know, town affiliated properties where this, this may be an issue, then by all means, please let us know. But as far as, you know, we, we, we stop it with that town affiliation, like we're not gonna be hanging these in the silo parking lot or. You know, any other business establishment parking lot, because that's not, that, those are not properties that we're affiliated with.
All right, so we've had a lot of discussion on this, what does the board wanna do? Do what Eric just suggested, Scott is shaking his head yes. Sarah, yes, Joe, yes. Right, so, could you do that and bring it back? I will not be at the next meeting, just FYI. So Sarah will be running the meeting. So I will miss that discussion. Joe?
So Eric, did you reach out to Travis, because we probably should put on a metal wall where bolted up high? So Travis has the thing to put it, you know, see if the highway department could. Install them, so they're installed. Does that make sense, or do you want someone else?
Eric?
Yeah, so I hadn't thought that far ahead, because coming into this meeting, I wasn't even sure we were going with signage. So absolutely, I will reach out to Travis and make sure that they can get those installed for us. Um, and just to be clear, so what you guys are looking for from me now is just a number of those signs and where they'll be going for the next meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm on it.
And I'm just talking about where the money should come from, as much as I don't, I'd rather the economic development should come out of Travis's budget for signs. The money should come from Travis for signs.
Eric?
In my head, this is one hundred percent a trails and recreation problem, not a highway problem. I know that they do take care of the parking lot, but it is because we have a trails and recreation venue there. So we can absolutely pay, I mean, it's. We're not talking a, a huge chunk of money, and we have rather large item, you know, line item for trails and recreation implementation. So in my mind, it comes out of that line item, if, you know, if you feel differently, let me know.
Eric, I mean, Sarah, did you have something else?
No.
Okay, so you know what we're asking you to do, and you'll report back at the, on the meeting of April fifth. Okay, great. Uh, let's see, is there anything else from economic development tonight? All right, great. We're gonna move into the Board of Liquor Control.
I make a motion, we go into the Board of Liquor Control?
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, first, we have a first. Catch up here. I just wanna, I wanna. Okay, so this is one of those board where we're gonna sign these all afterwards, cause there's many, many, many signatures. I don't know how many, but this is, this is it.
Sure.
So, uh, yes. So you may ask that question, Sarah.
Randy, do you have any issues with any of these?
I just, no.
Yeah, there's rapscallions. Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the first and third class licenses and outside consumption permits. As follows, TWG Hospitality LLC, DBA Lodge at Mount Snow. One MT LLC, DBA Dover Forge. Now, so limited, including Bullwheel, Harriman's Cousins, Snow Barn, Sundance, Corinthia Base Lodge and Fairways. I'll leave seconds.
So does somebody want a second? And we have no issues from the police department? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion, and we issue or approve the second class licenses for APT Inc., DBA Tony's Pizza, and France Harbor.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, and Shane a motion to come out of Board of.
Motion to come out of Board of Liquor Control.
Second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
This must be on time, he must be on seven seconds.
So we have under the consent agenda, the, to approve the minutes of March first, twenty twenty-two?
I moved to approve the minutes of March first, twenty twenty-two.
Second, second by Scott, any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Is everybody here?
Yeah.
I have a minute left. Motion to, you know, just go.
Motion to approve the warrants for March fifth for two hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred eighty dollars and fifty-three cents.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're down to FYI. We're five minutes ahead of schedule now. We have the Deerfield Valley New Neighbors Project Plan, which is included here. It's, it's large, it's about welcoming our Afghan neighbors who are gonna be coming to communities. What did I do with that, it's here somewhere? It's, there's just a lot of paper here. Oh, here it is. So everybody, the board was emailed this, so if anybody's interested in this. The information is here, I'm not gonna read this letter, it's a Q and A and all kinds of information, so that's available for anybody who wants it. We also have the Senior Solutions Annual Report. Which is this document, again, we're not gonna read it, but it's available for anybody who wants to read it. The Planning Commission's gonna meet March twenty-eighth at six thirty PM, Trails and Rec are gonna meet April twelfth at six thirty PM. And liaison reports. Nothing, hearing nothing, executive session, I am not aware. All right, so I would, I'm gonna move to adjourn at seven fifty-four. Great, so who wants to get on? You gotta be really, there's, there's more than the last time around, you gotta really dig in on those.